Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest pin knife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, well, Anne?
Thank you. Thank you for letting us go first and thank you for your time. We are from a group called Old Glory Quilters of Park County. We've tried to recognize as many veterans as we can at different activities and somewhere along the line we've missed one, but we've come to find out that Mr. Michael Novak, you are a veteran and as members of the Old Glory Quilters of Park County, we would like to recognize you with a quilt. First of all, we want to say welcome home. Thank you for your service and your sacrifices and God bless you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
We would like you to open so we can get a picture if you don't mind.
Sure, my brothers, all three of us, all four of us.
Well, I'm not sure it's big enough to wrap around.[131.16][131.16](Laughter)
Did you say Old Glory Quilters? Old Quilters of Glory.
Well, we can be all of you, but it doesn't matter. We're Old Glory Quilters of Park County.
Two Navy, one Army, one Air Force.
Really?
Got it all covered.
How nice.
That's a nice one.
It's very nice.
Do you mind if I take one too? I might be able to get it in the bag.
Come on, get him there.
Don't stand behind it, Anne.
No, no, he's been like, that's all right. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for letting us do this today.
No problem. I really appreciate it.
Thank you again for your service. Would you like me to help you fold it?
It was our honor and privilege actually, sir, so.
It's our honor also, sir. We get a, we get a better honor, I think, hopefully than you do out of this, what we can do, recognize you folks for all the sacrifices you made. Good job folding that, that's a good job. Yeah.
You want to see me fold clothes? I can do that.
All right. There's always the folding.
We have to learn how to do this. I appreciate it.
I'd be great, Chief, until the end of the park.
Thank you for letting us do that.
Thank you, Anne.
I have to go to another meeting here.
All right, see ya.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. You all got a copy of the previous minutes meeting from the 22nd of June and 7th of July?
I make a motion to accept five minutes.
Oh, second.
On favor?
Aight.
Thank you. Claims and warrants, end of the month, $108,545.69. July 21st meeting, $370,025.69. Motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion that we accept the claims and warrants as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Thank you. Okay, payroll warrants for 6/30, 7/7, 7/14, 7/21, the amount of $37,974.99.
Make a motion to accept the payroll.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Bank reconciliation and utilities at the end of the month of June is $30,240.2. The town is $977,756.19. Customer deposit is $34,005. And payroll is $3,089.92.
I'll make a motion to accept the bank reconciliations.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Thank you. And we got three billing adjustments, one for $102.83, one of zero, and one of $30.55.
I'll make a motion to accept these billing adjustments according to ordinance.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Okay. Skip.
I'm sure you want to start off with me.
Yeah.
Let's see, 16 months for the month. I don't know where we're at for the year. It's kind of been jumbled up here lately. I know the last meeting, we had talked about the fuel tank for the firehouse and the town, whether it be a car or fuel tank, I don't know what Kathy's got on. I did talk with Doug Drier at Epic. He's requested the specs on the tank, so I'd sent him those. And he had basically replied back, the care said go with what local county, state rules, guidelines, requirements, building codes, and/or ordinances. Nothing as far as whatever our ordinances are, we could go with that.
And nothing about 100 foot from the building?
Nothing about 100 foot. So whatever our ordinance is or guidelines are or whatever we have to follow.
We wouldn't have one. I don't know if the state has any kind of...
That I don't know, so.
If there's, the state building code's kind of like, hard to understand, so I don't even know if you'd ask, I would assume that's Homeland. Homeland Security is over, Department of Homeland Security is over the state building code, so I don't know if there's somebody over there who could tell us if they have a requirement for a commercial fuel tank.
Yeah, that I don't know, but I know the issue was last time was the insurance would say it was 100 feet.
And I, well, yeah, but I wonder if that's part of, that sounds, I just don't know if the state has a, has a rule on that.
No, that's fine. Like I said, we're just trying to clear the air. I want to make sure he had all the information and all that, so.
Yeah, the insurance company's just saying, well, as long as you build it the code, we don't care. And then you build it and you say, well, I don't know what, but then you find out, oh, the state building code's X and we just didn't know it, they're going to say, oh, well.
The original email was 100 foot from the building and then you had to follow state...
Yeah, there's requirements.
Local requirements.
There are requirements.
I'm sure they're grown up.
The state fire marshal didn't have anything on that?
I haven't got with him. One bridge at a time.
Oh, okay.
Locally, I didn't think there was anything, but there are mixed abilities all over town.
Because they don't have anything locally, right?
No.
Businesses and everything, I mean, it's personal businesses, whatever, you look around and some of the businesses have them right next to the building, so.
Yeah. Ours is 100 foot. We had fuel tanks that are wastewater treatment plant, we had to burn around it all and had to be so far away from the...
Yeah, we did have to do that and close it with those.
Yeah, this is a tank, yeah, a tank, so it's, it's got its secondary containment built into it.
I just Googled and found, I, again, IEDM's got some rules. Department of Homeland Security has rules. So I'm not...
I'm just trying to make it easier on Kathy so she ain't got to four or five different fuel colors split around and get a bunch of erroneous charges.
Yeah, we get some kind of permit, it looks like, from Homeland Security and they will expedite it for $5,000.
Well, I don't mind the credit card, but like I said, it doesn't solve the issue of when the power's out.
Correct.
Well, and for instance, the situation with Kirk the other day, he needed gas, he was in Rockville for the pump testing, so he had to do his own stuff and then now has his receipts for...
Yeah. So, yeah. So he used the fire department's card?
Yeah, he used his personal.
He used his personal.
Because his, because the part was with me.
Yeah. We need to figure something out for him.
Yeah.
Well, the issue at the firehouse could be solved real easy with 24 hours with the generator.
Yeah.
Plus the generators on the trucks that we have, but, you know, we could make the pigtail and fire them up, so.
And if we go with the $500, the 500 gallon tank, then that would allow the town utilities to have fuel as well for if they need tree trimming or whatever, there's storms, our lines being down. It's benefiting everybody.
If we can figure out where we can get it placed.
Yeah.
That seems to be our hiccup, is where.
Yeah, we had to, I forget how many we used after register. I know we haven't registered all the, Nike did it. My God.
What if it's a, what if it's a building, a town building, but unpopulated?
The tank itself is a...
It's the tank itself is the issue, not the, not the location or the...
Yeah, I was reading here, it's a, they consider it to be a class one structure. So you have to get construction design release from Homeland Security before you're able to put one in. It's a $315 fee. Maybe, maybe it's a little less than that, I'm not sure. You have to submit site plans. I just Googled it.
It's Homeland Security?
Homeland Security. And then I did see something else here for IEDM had something too, for above-ground storage tanks. You have to register them. So there's no, you know, local ordinances that I'm aware of, but it looks like you're going to have to deal with at least one, if not two, state agencies to get a tank permit. And maybe the fire marshal too, as Mike said, because I see some reference to the fire marshal, but that's part of Homeland Security now, so.
Do other departments have one located close to their building?
I, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if there's places to do that, just didn't go through the process.
Yeah, don't tell.
But, you know, I'm sure that people have tanks that aren't, aren't properly permitted, yeah. But if you, you know, that might be an insurance issue if, if we have one and we don't go through the right process and then something happens, given our luck lately, we'd be surprised to something.
We hear it from there.
The older ones are probably grandpa, they're pre-90s.
They could be, yeah, they could be too, so. But...
Yeah, black cloud needs to keep moving.
Yeah.
Dissipate something.
I'll try to get some information on that, I'm going to look at it.
Well, continue to get to the, also, I'll see, I'm going to 535, isn't it? Fender, fender, a little bit more than that. After the dust settled, the truck's back in the firehouse, I went and looked at it, the bed is severely damaged, it's buckled in the middle, the light bar on top is broke. One of the back doors of the driver's side, it's, it does not open or close easily. So the fuel tank is not ruptured, which is a good thing because the hitch that was just about completely broke off, jammed up next to it, didn't puncture it, so we're kind of safe there. So I don't know if, what the next step on that, what we need to do, if we need to do anything or, claim has been filed or...
The skid unit got hit too.
And the skid unit was hit and it was leaking, so I don't know how much damage is done to that either.
The status right now, as far as I know, is, I just got the police report this morning, so I forwarded onto our insurance. She evidently contacted State Farm, that's who the insurance is through, gave me a claim number and suggested I call in the morning just to see if there's anything else they need from us before they, and what their next steps are, because I haven't heard from anybody on that side.
Well, I think the holdup was...
The police report.
The officer being off for multiple days and the police report not being finalized till today.
Yeah.
That kind of put everything...
But I got it last week today, so I got it on my desk to call in the morning and see what's going on.
Anything we need to do, just let us know. Adjuster needs to get in, we'll find somebody to get in.
I might have to get somebody with some brains involved, just to return.
Not tonight.[933.54][933.54](Laughter)
But there is just a little bit more damage than just the bumper being rolled up underneath, so I couldn't really tell how much I did, wasn't feeling like climbing up all the way underneath of it at the time, but I could...
And the driver's seat's broken.
Yeah, the driver's seat's broken completely.
Broken completely. So is the rider.
So is the rider, yeah.
So it's, I don't know what kind of frame or structural damage there is, but there's definitely some, definitely to the bed and the cat area, so.
I would think where the bed is bent on the sides indicates to me that the frame is bent right there to where it goes over the axles.
Yeah, so it, it's buckled right above the wheel wells, so. And like I said, the actual frame where the hitch mounts to it is welded, it is actually broke off, it's not broke off and welded, the metal is sheer.
Well, let me ask you this, when they are going to send out an adjuster, do you want me to contact you so you can have someone available?
If you would.
Yeah.
Me or Kurt, one of us, both of us, somebody to get back to you.
Okay.
A day's notice would be great.
Yeah. It's possible.
I got a guy coming in new today and I don't give my phone till 4 o'clock, it's kind of...
Yeah.
But that's all I think we got, I think it's enough for this month. Try again next month.
Glad nobody was injured any worse than it was. Diana?
I, the Park Board has met since we had the last council meeting, but I have no idea what we talked about because we got a new grandbaby since then and I have no recollection of anything. Lost three days, I have no clue what...
What does she have?
A little girl.
Little girl.
Skylar Grace.
Oh, that's pretty neat.
Her bike's good. So I, I honestly don't know. We're working towards pranks in the park.
On that safety Rose Hallman, you understand that that is a cost opinion only, there's no hard figures in there for anything.
We're going to have, we discussed it a lot and we're going to have to get someone who, because we talked with Cody, Cody came and he gave us a lot of pointers and kind of suggested what would be best, the kind of water to run through, so we're...
We'll have to get a complete estimate, because those numbers are just a cost opinion, they don't mean anything.
He knows the company that installs them, that builds them, so we're going to try to get with them and see what they can do for us and kind of use the plan the Rose Hallman designed, but we're going to jazz it up a little. And we also talked about the fact that we'd like to build some type of an enclosed park. We want to put the shelter there, but we want to put an enclosed portion there to house the chemicals and the pump and all that. And the Park Board also needs a place to store things, the items for the pranks in the park. Our little shed is just stuff full of all of that stuff and, and we really need a place to put things like that, so we thought maybe there was a way to work it all in together, so it's a plan in progress. Thank you.
Mike?
Met with Cody and Brad last week. We've got a couple of engineers that they're going to, we're going to send our piece to request for proposals to. We're working on scope of services, kind of went over, kind of generally went over the scope of services. I sent Kathy and them copies of what that scope of services should look like, so then when we meet with the engineers, they have a good idea of what's expected of them. Formal approval, of course, will have to come from you, but we'll meet with them ahead of time. Anybody wants to, we'll let you know when that meeting is, probably during the day's time sometime. And get to ask them, they get to ask us questions about the situation and then the finalization will come from you guys, on recommendations of, of your operators, and then you can interview them as well. There's an interview process you can use and there's paperwork for that too. But you're not, you're not required to do qualifications, you can do a proposal to get a hard number. So we'll get all that together next week and we'll go from there. So I just want to get you guys an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
It shouldn't take much more, much longer. Once you get the engineer on board, you know, there's contracts and everything else that has to get signed, but we just, I'm just concerned that he knows what the scope of services are, what's expected of them as the engineer, you know, performed a professional engineer report. And then I asked the operators to make sure that when we go with scope of services, if they see anything that they need to include in that, go ahead and do that as well. So they'll get you, we'll get you copies before anything else happens. So did you look at the scope of services as well? Scott will get a copy, so we'll get a copy so we can look at that and see if there's anything else that we need to put in there. And then get that PR started and then get in the funding department.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
Thank you. Okay. We've got a quote from Leighton's for the air conditioning, the unit. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
The coil's got a hole in it. Quote for the coil replacement versus new unit that was purchased only a year ago, parts and labor in 2020. New includes one-year parts, labor warranty and expective charge to see any other options, which include longer warranty period. His response, the only product that he has available, has a five-year warranty as Ameristar and it's currently two months back order. All other products, products are one-year warranty on anything commercial. So. Yeah, that is, yeah, I think that is the A coil leak, that's in the ductwork.
I don't, they just said coil replacement, so I assume that's in the outside unit, isn't it?
It could be either.
It could be either.
I'm not for sure, but I know we had to call him back when the temperatures first started warming up because it wasn't cooling. He'd come at that time and said he had found a leak, hoping he had repaired it and put Freon in it, and then we had to call him back a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, the way it locks, it's the outside coil, because they said it'll be sitting on a pad.
Okay, I didn't read that.
One down here, so...
Yeah, outside unit is changing, the unit will be set on the existing pad.
Unfortunately, commercial, you can't get the extended five-year, 10-year warranty on a lot of the brands. I think that's what happened last time, we chose to go with that. And we went with that geothermal unit, there was a 10-year factory, parts and labor plus five-year on flow center.
Well, it's still been the last one, but...
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I guess they didn't get it.
Year and a half.
Vacuated very well.
Don't sound like it.
Well?
They did recharge in it, it's still working good for now, but I don't know how long that's going to last.
Put some sealing in it and hope it, this too, probably. So we really don't have an option when I have to get it fixed, so, or put up with you.
It was, it was warm in there the other day when I went up and talked to her, it was, it was pretty warm.
Yeah.
And there, it wasn't comfortable.
By afternoon, it was pretty good. Of course, it's been extremely hot too, but...
Right, well, and that day was hot, but...
I guess the only thing we do is replace the whole thing or just the coil.
Which Freon center, do we know that?
It'd be...
22 or 410 or...
It'd be one of the new ones.
Two years old, it's got to be the new one.
Two years ago, it should be the same one, so it should be a drop-in with no capacity reduction.
Since it's only two years old, I tend to think that just replacing the coil would be good enough. I don't see a real advantage to replacing one that's that new, because everything else in there is pretty bulletproof other than that.
All right.
And having built those things for two years, I know that they, if the coil goes bad, it doesn't, doesn't get better.
The recommendation is for coil replacement only for a cost of $1,866.66.
I'd second that. That's a motion.
That was a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
On favor?
And that would only still be just the one year though, right?
Yeah.
As I said, yeah.
A bit of a weak tube or, and you know, a lot of those warnings on those things, if you, if you have a tube leak, they're going to pay you to replace one to not replace the unit, so. Okay, you got that, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, trade-in clause, the fund number change, the state board of the council mandated to go to a four-digit number.
Yeah, it's that copy I gave you, so your fund report, appropriation report, revenue report, all's going to look a little different. So it gives you a list of the old numbers and what they were changed to. It'll take some getting used to, that's...
And there's no rhyme or reason, what's, I mean, you can't kind of have a rule of thumb changing over.
No, we had to use their required numbers. Even for the, like the drop-down grant funds I used, they had a certain, like such-and-such number through such-and-such, we had to pick out a number to use and...
I always got something.
Have a change.
Okay.
I think it was easier than this.
Well, good luck, Wes.
You too.
Yeah.
He will use it much more.
If we could pause that and...
Okay.
Going to be writing for days.
Yeah, probably not.
That all is. There you go, Janice, all you...
If it's not a placement sign, I'll just write below you.
And did I miss them?
Sorry.
Your song on the floor here.
Yeah, just checking.
Forgot your story.
No, you're all right. I... No, you're all right. I just thought you wanted it repaired.
Okay. I've already got a note from MINTA for the fourth quarter 2022 ECA factors. That's basically information on what you're. That's. They figure that in and that goes right into the cost of the purchase. Not a whole lot we can do about it. We got to thank from USDI in regards to the Indiana Utility Regulatory thing about state codes and the relief devices. And again, there's not a whole lot of options there. That's just something we're going to have to pay for.
Need a motion?
Please.
I make a motion. We accept this proposal from USDI.
Soon.
In favor?
Right.
Okay. And then we've got a Brad's list of surplus equipment. Does anybody see anything on there that you got a question about?
Does that mower run? What do we know?
I think. I can't speak for them. I don't think, it's one they haven't used a long, long time and a lot of money's dished in it to keep repairing it.
Yeah, it's been a problem for a couple of years, yeah.
Okay.
So first thing we got to do, I think Scott, we got to, gee, man, declare all this surplus?
Correct. And then you can dispose of it. I kind of forgot about this because I can't remember off the top of my head. There's rules about if it's worth a certain amount, if it's under a certain amount, you can just say, we're selling it and, you know, first come, first, first, first serve. Now, we're selling it for, here, this is fifty bucks and this is a hundred bucks. And some of that stuff, you might be able to just put a price tag on it and say, we're selling it for this much if you want to come offer it. If there's some stuff that you think that you might have multiple people interested in, then you probably ought to accept bids for it. You know, vehicles and stuff like that, a lot of times.
You don't have to set up an inspection time and.
Yeah, I, yeah, you know, I, usually we put an ad in paper or something that says we're going to accept, give, give people three weeks or whatever to, to know about it. But nowadays, you need to probably put it on social media as well, but you're not required to. But you can get more attention that way. I'd have them put it all out in the yard out there and say, come up there in business hours and want to take a look at it. If there's something here, only I would say if there's something that doesn't run, Brad knows not, you know, I would put in there something about that one. I have an ad that I can get you to use and claim. But if there's some stuff on here that I don't, I, I'm not even sure what some of this stuff is, you know. If there's some stuff that you think, hey, well, if we can get fifty bucks for it, great. And we just want to, you know, first come, first served, or you just want to say, we'll take bids on all of it.
Just to be fair, then you might not get anybody bidding on it.
Yeah, if nobody bids, then we can just scrap price?
Scrap price, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion to declare all this stuff presented by Brad as surplus. I guess first of it.
I'll second.
In favor?
All right.
So then. Need to get with Brad and see what, I'd like to know what runs, in case somebody asks what runs, what don't run.
Some of that, we tried to look back through and find the years on some of it, but I think that's almost impossible.
Okay. So then we'll refine that whistle a bit more in. And the last thing on the list was the ordinance to dissolve the wards to go to all at large.
Oh, I, I emailed you, didn't I?
Are you sure?
I swear to God.
My new email?
I thought so. Yeah, I did it like right after the meeting. Let me see if I, yeah, let me see if I, I, I don't know, I can't print it though. I know, I, I think I might still have it on here.
Okay.
Let me, let me, uh, before, uh. Yeah, I did it.
No, I, I remember you emailed me and asked about when the terms.
Yeah, I, I, I thought, I was hoping you had it. Because I, I didn't, I was a new portal today. Let's see. Yeah, I did it. It's all proud myself.
I made the card you, no, you could have, I guess you could have told me I shouldn't have had it. Is it an ordinance?
Yes. But I, I made it so it could be done in one reading.
Okay.
I don't know how to get it to you guys. I mean, I guess I could read it out loud or something. It's not that long. Maybe I emailed to the wrong address then. So this is an ordinance amending Monizuma Municipal Code, section ten dash one dash thirteen to abolish town council districts. Whereas pursuant to Monizuma Municipal Code, four members of the town board are elected or appointed based on districts within the boundaries of the town, the fifth member being in the at-large position. Whereas Indiana Code thirty-six, five, two, four point one G provides that the legislative body of a town of less than thirty-five hundred people may adopt an ordinance abolishing town legislative body districts and allowing for all members to be elected or appointed from anywhere within the town. And whereas Monizuma has a population of less than thirty-five hundred people and desires to abolish legislative districts for members of the town council to promote higher participation level in its membership, now therefore be it ordained as follows. Legislative districts in the town of Monizuma are hereby abolished. The town code is amended to now, it would read, "All members of the town council shall be elected or appointed as at-large members without regard to where the member resides within the boundaries of the town. This ordinance shall be effective upon its adoption. Adopted on the twenty-first day of July, twenty twenty-two, after an affirmative vote to suspend the rules and adopt in one reading." So if you are inclined to do this, I had this set up so we could prove it in one meeting, which requires somebody to make a motion to suspend the rules. It has to be seconded. Then you all have to vote in favor of doing that. And then you have to vote on the ordinance.
I thought they all had to be here to do that.
They do not. So it's two-thirds of the members present.
Is that the same for the county or?
To suspend the rules. It's just the members present. Now, you, it does take.
Well, I mean, all members are present.
Well, that's true. That's a good point.
Okay. So can I have a motion to suspend the rules and adopt this in one meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules to adopt this ordinance in one meeting.
Second.
In favor?
All right.
Now, you got to vote on the ordinance.
So I make a motion to vote on making it all a at-large because that's how I say it. Yes.
No, I'll say it.
On favor?
All right.
Thank you.
It takes, yeah, it takes two-thirds majority to adopt on one read, but I don't know what two-thirds of three is, but all four of them voted for it. I didn't do, I wouldn't do fractions.
Okey-dokey. Rep?
Where is the, the relief valve going to be? Is that going to be at the north end in the, said it's going to be at the odorizer, odorizer port?
Yeah.
That's a substation up there?
Yeah, in the north end of town.
My backyard, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to know where the whistle's sliding on the run. Thanks. That's all I got.
Only thing I have, I've been in contact with DJ Harkrider and John Cook both about the procedure and policy for the school and what's the school going to do about pickup in the evening. And DJ has told me that they've talked, but I haven't seen anything yet to know. But I, we got to, you know, from the fire standpoint and the town marshal standpoint, the board, we got to stick together and say, they got to change something or there's going to be a major accident someplace. So.
Yeah, because you can't get anything through with the way they have it. It's all blocked up every angle, every direction. Right.
The suggestion's been made to them is to run straight out Strawberry Road and come in. And then still have their pickup at the same place on, in front of the schools they don't have in the last couple of years. So, but you don't need them coming in here and blocking thirty-six. And somebody's, we're going to have an accident to clean up someday. So. And that's why I'm saying we need to be in support of John. And John's been real close to DJ and talking and, and I've talked to both of them and, I guess I'm wondering, should somebody go to school and say, Mr. Taylor, have you done anything yet? So.
Well, I, I'd like to see what they come up with and then.
I would too, but you know, school starts, we've got a project meeting in two weeks and school starts the Monday after that. So they need to have something in place and then writing long before school starts or we'll be right back to the same, same bottleneck.
You don't want them to say, well, let's try this and see who this works. You want them to have a plan.
I don't know. How's DJ affiliated?
He's part of the school board.
He's our school board.
I sent him to DJ.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's our school board rep. So, and that's all I got.
So when's the next school board meeting?
Well, they just had one.
They did?
I don't know.
They had one.
I don't track that.
So would you go to the superintendent's office and not up here because?
We could.
I would suggest that to go straight to him because my dealings in the past with Mr. Taylor up here, I think it needs to go from superintendent down to him and then them all collaborate and then with us and, or, and John to make sure it's something that is feasible.
Just let them know it's a safety hazard and emergency response happen.
Do you know if John and DJ's got something in writing or?
No, they don't.
So they just had a meeting on the fourteenth.
John sent us plans last year, didn't he, when he was?
Yeah, John gave them three different choices and they refused to follow any of them, so.
He wanted to do his own and that one was not using all of Strawberry Road because he didn't like the way it was.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, yes.
Well, up in the park.
Right.
Start writing text to every parent who's stopped out here and that.
Real rough when thirty-six is blocked in accident.
I saw.
Taylor every day.
I saw several near, near misses when I was parked out there. I got so I would just park at the firehouse or out here and wait till the line cleared.
Right. Well, and then they were parking in the back of the gas station at one point. They were parking in the front of it at one point. So it just kind of was a mess.
Yeah.
So I agree, something should be implemented prior to school starting so that it can be implemented from day one and then everybody's on the same page, parents included.
Yeah.
And they have to stick to it.
So our stance is that we're, we're at the point that we get with John and says, give us what you want. And then it's up to us to go to him and say, here's what you're going to do.
Yes.
Yeah, because we're going to need time to dismember all that information to all the people who pick up kids.
Yeah.
That's quite a few.
That's why I say we can't wait two more weeks.
Yeah.
They, they need a, they, they should have done. They may have it done. I don't know, but.
John will be around tomorrow, of course, you know?
As far as I know.
Would you check with him and ask him, let me know, please?
Okay, because we only have.
I won't be around.
Just over two and a half weeks till school starts, so.
You won't be around the one noon?
Afternoon, yeah. And find out and. Make sure everybody sees it and. Yeah, I, I haven't had much luck with him. At all.
I imagine he'll just resend everybody what he sent us last year because I think there was three different.
I think so.
Scenarios.
Yeah.
What John compiled. And all three of his were.
At least a couple.
Good choices, any of them.
Yeah. So maybe he'll, he'll send them all to you guys and you can review them and then respond with what you think is best and then.
Okay.
Okay. So I got you.
Okay, I'll go. Anybody else want to go?
To where?
School when we get this worked out.
Yeah.
You don't want to go on.
I'm thinking.
To that one or a corporation?
I'm thinking we may need to barricade the road out here. Just block.
Do that. And we're going to, down at the Riverton, talk superintendent.
That's.
All right, well, we'll wait till here and get something going. Well, don't surprise us if school's starting away. He does it.
Pretty close.
I don't have anything. John?
I don't think I have anything because we talked about a couple items I was thinking of we've already hit. So I think I'm good.
a couple items I was thinking of we've already hit, so I think I'm good.
Kathy? Scott?
Nothing we had to talk about.
Skip pass something.
Skip's got something.
Yeah, we did pump test all the trucks. No discrepancies, so we should be good on that. Kathy, you'll probably get the bill later for that. For you and the township. Should only be for two trucks, though. Some tanker and five.
And that was done by, is it that?
Mike Brown.
Mike Brown.
From Rosedale?
M N H.
Okay, yeah. So I got an invoice today that I hadn't received one. It was a past due, but I didn't receive the original. So Tasha got it, ran through Plains, I think.
What was it for?
Does something about, was there an air conditioner on one of the units?
Five thirty-two Thirteenth Street.
The tank.
Yeah.
It needed some repairs.
It's working.
Yes, it is. He knows.
I make a motion we adjourn for having no further business.
I'll second.